Sir, the recording has begun.
Thank you so much. Let the record show it is now two oh one and I am calling our June eighteenth, two thousand twenty meeting to order. I'm going to call on one of the trustees to lead us in the pledge to the flag and I'm going to pick Art Merilio. Art, can you lead the group in the pledge to the flag?
Yes, sir. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I can do that.
Thank you, sir. Proceed when you're ready.
Okay. I pledge allegiance
Allegiance
to the flag of the United
Of the United States.
States of America and to the public
To the public.
For which it stands
Which stands.
One nation
Nation.
Under God
Under God.
Indivisible
Indivisible.
With liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Liberty, justice.
Justice for all. Thank you, Trustee Merilio.
You're welcome.
Dr. Head, has the meeting notice been properly posted?
Yes, it was posted in accordance with the law.
Okay. My, uh, thanks a lot and there's a couple of things I want to mention, you know, before we move on, Dr. Head.
Yes, sir.
I just received a call from Sal Devar and she wanted me to apologize to the group, but she didn't use the word apologize, but she indicated, you know, that she's in a very important meeting this afternoon uh, that she cannot miss and she's working on a special committee. So she's, she said she's with us in spirit. Uh, so, so we wish Miriam well. And also, uh, one of the things I wanted to indicate it and some of the trustees have indicated it in an earlier meeting. I just wanted to pass along my sincere thanks to all of the employees and the community for supporting the Lone Star system, you know, during these turbulent times. You know, I know they've had difficulties and heartaches, but based on everything that I've seen, we have stayed the course. And as a result of us staying the course, we will serve our constituents very well. So thanks again for a job well done. Now, Kid, you want to say anything about the closed session? I don't, do we have any items for the closed session?
We, we do not. The administration does, does not have any items.
Okay, alrighty. No, since that's the case, if there's a need later on, we are, we equipped to do so. Uh, could you move on then with, uh, any introduction that you might have?
Helen, do we have? Helen?
Yeah, Chancellor, we do not have anybody
Okay.
introduced today.
Okay.
Say, Mr. Chairman, can I jump in? This is Mike Sullivan.
Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, thank you too. Uh, excuse me, one, we need to certify the forum. Chancellor needs to do that. And two, we need to do roll call on board members present, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I've already, well, I didn't do that, but I have a roll call sheet that I've done and the, the only person that I have, persons that I haven't accounted for so far is, uh, he may be here now, Stoma and, uh, David Vogt.
I'm here. I'm here. I've been here.
Okay, okay. I didn't see it. I'm sorry. Okay, I see you now. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, what about, uh, David Vogt?
No.
Okay, so everyone's here with the exception of Sal Devar and Vogt.
Chairman.
Yes, no problem at all. And I'll make sure that the person that's recording the minutes have a, have a copy of this data or they can get a copy of this data. Thank you so much. Okay, Helen, I don't know if I said this earlier, but do we have anyone wishing to make public comments to the group?
Uh, Chair Smith, nobody signed up today.
Oh, okay. Alrighty. Uh, we're at item eight on the agenda, which deals with the approval of minutes and I'm going to take the, uh, well, two sets of minutes. Uh, the first set of minutes is from May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty, our regular meeting of the Board of Trustees. May I have a motion and a second on those sets, on that set of minutes?
So.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to properly second that we adopt, uh, those minutes. Are there any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, vote by the usual sign.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, motion passes. Okay, the second set of minutes is our May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty special meeting. May I have a motion and a second?
Don't move.
Second.
Hopefully moving second that we adopted amendments about May twenty eighth, two thousand twenty meeting. Any questions or comments? If not, all of those are in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, we'll move on to special reports and at this point, the Chancellor will make his usual report out. Dr. Head.
Okay. Yeah, I have a number of, uh, updates and just, uh, bring the board up to date and so earlier this week, we had a webinar. We had nineteen hundred employees that signed in on the webinar, nineteen hundred. And we talked about a number of things, enrollments, but a lot of the discussion was about some of the issues that are going on in the country. And, uh, I had already reached out, um, I think I sent you a note, but I had, uh, reached out to a small group of individuals that I've known for a long time that I've worked with. And so we are creating an advisory committee. Uh, we've had one on and off, but I, I think we need to go back and revisit everything. Really are interested in internal and external advisory committee. And I'll, uh, make sure the board knows what's going on with the external. We have, I mean, that, you know, what we're talking about is some of the issues going on today, diversity, inclusion, equity. And I, um, you know, we've done a lot of things here, but I, uh, I mean, I, you know, we talked the other day about what we need to be doing in orientation and the education thirteen hundred class, the training for everyone, which we already have, reemphasizing that and making sure that some of these issues were upfront. The police training, even though, um, I mean, I think our police department is very diverse and done a great job, but we, we just want to make sure everybody is reminded of, of what's important. We've had, we've got forums set up, the individual colleges, campuses are setting up forums and, um, really there's two parts to this. One is the messaging and things that we're doing, but the other is the actions that we want to take. So I'm asking this group to come back with some recommendations that I think, um, and, and by the way, diversity to me is a big issue. We've talked about that. I've got a message going out to employees, but um, that's a lot of different things. I mean, we, we're very diverse at Lone Star, but in this particular issue, I want, I want to be focused on this. And I sent, uh, you know, I sent a note out earlier and Trustee Lloyd, I agree with you, this is not about race, it's about a human race and what we ought to be doing at Lone Star. And I want us to be a model. So I'll, I will keep you informed. The discussions we've had thus far have been very positive. And I would like to keep them, what I, what I told the group is, you know, I can take certain actions or we can take certain actions. Um, what I need is some help. I don't, all of us, until you hear them talking about some of the experiences that they've had, I, I, you just don't get it. I mean, really, and I, um, I mean, I do think we're very fortunate to be living in Houston, in the Houston metropolitan area where I think there's a willingness and the, we, we all live and work in the same place. And like I said, as Trustee Lloyd said, we're all human beings, so we're, we're taking that approach. So let's talk about this and see how we can make things better for our students and employees and, um, keep making progress. So, um, I've got a lot of good news, actually. The enrollments are improving daily. So we are sixty-eight days from the start of registration, so a little over two months. And sixty-four days since we started it. And just depending on how you look at it, so we're either, we're minus twenty-eight, uh, twenty-seven percent right now, if you're looking at sixty-eight days to registration, and if you look at the number of days we've had registration, we're minus seventeen. And the, the, the reason for the, uh, the differences there is we started registration two days late, uh, two weeks later than we normally did. So we're trending in the right direction. You know, the last time I talked to you, I think we were at thirty-three percent or so. And we, at one time, we were at minus thirty-eight. So we are making progress. And I sent, you may not have had time, but I sent you an overview and Jennifer's going to talk a little bit about this, but um, every day it gets better. And I do mean every day. Every day it changes. We get up every morning and reports come in at seven-thirty where we're able to monitor what, what has occurred. I mean, the great news is the summer was up seven percent. The summer was up seven percent. So, um, a couple of other quick items. We have given out over six million dollars in the CARES grant, over thirteen thousand student. That's, uh, about forty percent of the money that we have. So we're, we have another round going out this summer. And then we have another round going out in the fall. And we've also, right now, we've got about twenty-eight thousand applications coming in for financial aid. So we're doing quite a bit there. Really on a, on the bachelor's degree, we've had, I got a report earlier today, we had a thousand applications for a hundred slots. So we're going to be very successful with our bachelor's degrees. And, um, the interesting thing about what happened this semester, not only did we finish, or this spring semester, not only did we finish with seventy thousand students, the success rates actually went up. I'm very proud. I cannot say enough about our faculty. I mean, everybody just hung in there. We've been helping the students a lot. I'm going to share with you some surveys and the students had a number of positive comments about the faculty and the help that they had. And I think it's really important that we continue that because we're going to be in this month for at least the next year. So just, I will send you the report, but the success rates for African went up five percent over this time last year. For Hispanics, it went up over two percent. And for whites, it went up one percent. I will tell you though, a lot of that is a result of what happened at Houston North and even in North here, I speak Houston North is making a difference. I'll send you that report. And by just backtracking just a little bit, Dr. Blanson and Dr. Wright are the ones who were kind of co-chairing this, um, what I'm just calling an advisory group right now, the internal advisory group. And then there are other people on there, uh, Benny Lambert and Hilton LaSalle, uh, Sheldon Moss. There's one other that I can't think of right now, but we have, um, we are adding more people to the, what I'm just going to call the steering committee and then
Yeah, the other one, Hilton LaSalle.
Hilton LaSalle, okay.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I've known them for a long, I mean, just, we're seeing a difference in what we're doing. We just need to keep doing it and seeing what's working and what's not working. And to me, stay the course. We, we're taking a look at just success rates all across the board. It's not just for blacks, it's for all students. But, um, we want to make sure that we're doing everything that we possibly can. I am concerned about what happens in the fall with the technology. We're, uh, had ongoing discussions. We're handling that through OTS. We will have the computers and we're trying to decide how to make those available and what kind of training would go on there. But the trends are much better, I will tell you. The, um, I mean, when we talk about making a change from minus being thirty-five to minus twenty-seven right now, keep in mind that every percentage point is one point two million dollars. So that's our finances get better really every day and every week they're going to get better. So I sent you a note with the dates, kind of the key dates, but at our next meeting, I think will be in July, I think we'll be a lot clearer about where we stand with everything. So. And that's my report.
Uh, Dr. Head, that's one thing, one thing that I missed, there was some noise going on, but you gave out some statistics concerning, I think you were talking about success rates. You said Hispanics were up and, and, uh, I can't think you said, uh, Anglos were up.
Yeah, one percent.
Well, Anglos, one.
Well, yeah, I didn't hear it plainly. There was noise in my background.
Oh, okay. Uh, well, Houston North, uh, Quentin worked on the center report last week or so. That shows that Houston North is making a difference. He's really the, you know, the one, we have smaller classes, the faculty or mentors there, and we're seeing a difference that Houston North is making. I mean, I, we need to sustain that, but I think we're just moving in the right direction with it. I, I attribute this job, I mean, it's all across the system, but the five percent increase is really good. It's closing the gap. We still have, we still have challenges. We know that. This is not a one semester or even a one year. This is an ongoing issue. And, and it has a lot to do with how prepared students are coming from, from high school or wherever they came from. How, how prepared are they when they come in? And that's what we're trying to work with is if they're not prepared, then we need to get them prepared because we do believe that everybody, I mean, I've seen it myself over in North here, is everybody can be successful if we give them the opportunity to be successful. They have to do fifty-one percent of the work, but we can help them be successful. So. So that, that's my report.
Uh, Dr. Head.
Yes, sir.
You said you had a, a thousand people apply for one hundred slots.
Right.
And.
Bill, bachelor's grades.
Okay, so in other words, that's the maximum that Lone Star can take is, is a hundred slots.
Well, that's a good question. That's where we started.
I'm wondering if it's nine hundred people that are not getting, given an opportunity. That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah. Um, Trustee Lloyd, I'll follow up with you because we're talking about other cohorts. In other words, we would start in the fall. I mean, initially I was concerned that we might not, you know, we wanted to make sure we got off to a good start. But I, uh, the response has been better, much better than I anticipated. I mean, I thought we'd, over the long term, we'd be fine, but so we're going to be talking about having a second start in the spring. In other words, we'd have two cohorts running. I, I'll follow up with you with that. But yes.
Just, you know, because that's, I'm looking at nine hundred people that could possibly be enrolled. That's all, that's the question.
Yeah, you know, some of them, uh, didn't meet the criteria. Let me, let me put together a report and show you. I don't think, I had the same questions you have. Um, it's a nice problem for us to have, but I think we can address that. The disparity that you're referring to.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, one other thing, uh, Dr. Head, I want, uh, you mentioned the forums and, and the large number of people that have, that have listened in on that.
Right.
And, uh, I think I remember you saying at one point in time that trustees could also, you know, you know, listen to the comments, you know, if they would like to and that you would, you know, make sure everyone is aware, you know, whenever those, uh, forums were being, being held.
Yeah, I, I, that's, uh, that's my oversight. We will, I'll make sure you get the invitation so you can sign in. It's, there's not, what, what happens is I talk and give an overview. Then we have about thirty minutes or forty minutes of questions. And then you saw the questions that we have, and we have another series of questions. There's the, you know, after we had the first one, which was capped at a thousand just because of the software issues and where the, uh, licensing issues that we had. Uh, the questions and the answers were twenty-four pages long. So they will not be that long this time because we've answered a lot of questions. But I, it just shows you the, uh, the employees have a lot of questions and concerns about what's going on. So we're just trying to stay in touch with them.
Chancellor, this is Mike Sullivan. Uh, you know, one, one byproduct of this crisis is people, people in the neighborhood, at least in my neighborhood, they get out, they get out of their houses. I mean, early in the morning and late in the evening, they're, they're walking their dogs, walking themselves, exercising, whatever. And I, I certainly get out to walk my little doggy. Point is, I've had people, I mean, almost on a daily basis, come up to me and ask, how's it going at the college? So any information, you know, that you can share out that, uh, from these forums perhaps is helpful. So there's a continuity of, of messaging, you know, that if somebody hears something, certainly if I hear something that's a concern, I'm going to let you know. But it's all been positive and, and people are interested. I mean, I, I found that interesting myself that, uh, people want to know. So.
Yeah, Dr. Head.
Yes, sir.
What's the max, when you say you had the webex and you had nineteen hundred people, is that the maximum that the webex can?
I believe it's three thousand. Link, is that correct?
Yes, sir. We can do three thousand in one time. And your last webex actually during the process had twenty-five hundred in it. Pretty much stayed around nineteen hundred people coming in and out.
Okay, so, and then the makeup of the majority of these employers, is it, is it one group? I mean, we got what, seven thousand people and I'm just, you know, and
Yeah. Um, I, I don't know, Link, do you have the, I mean, we, we intentionally, I was not trying to like take role. We have, we have, we know who was on there, but I haven't looked at that piece of it. I mean, I think we should be able to break it down between full-time and part-time though, right?
Yeah, I'm just hoping that out of the seven thousand or whoever, everybody can get a chance to say something. I'm just trying to see if that's possible.
Well, the way we do it is, uh, they, on the chat, well, they send in their questions and either, a lot of them I answer up until the time. You know, we have a set time and then the, the rest of them, Link, um, gathers them and then Helen prepares them and then we have vice chancellors that give them to me and then I, I edit them or put my own comments in there. So they all do, but it's not that kind of a discussion. We just, we, we, I answer questions in the middle of the meeting. But, uh, most of them, I put them in writing because, uh, there's a lot of short answers and incomplete questions. We have to go back sometimes to clarify exactly what they're talking about.
So everybody get a chance to get an opportunity to chat or whatever and it's up to
Yes, yes.
them to respond. Okay, thank you.
Right.
Chair, this is Mike Sullivan.
Sure. Go ahead, Mike.
Uh, thank you. Uh, Chancellor, how, could you compare this to convocation or is it just, um, uh, entirely different?
No, well, it is like convocation. Uh, um, to an extent, with this many people on it, yes, it is. You know, what I'm doing though is I'm targeting the issues that I know that are the most concerned. Like this, this past week, it was the issues that have happened since Minnesota and really the whole, the bigger picture issues of relationships and diversity and inclusion equity issue. But then people are concerned about the budgets. I mean, they're really concerned about the budgets and where we are. And, and so we get questions about returning to buildings and what's going to happen if somebody gets COVID. And so Mario's been the lead person on that and sending out messages. So but that, you know, the, to answer your question, what it, what it does is sometimes we think people know. I mean, that, that's pretty typical in any organization. You think they know unless they ask. Oh, when I see these questions, especially the patterns of them, then we know where we need to do a better job of communication. Actually, the more I look at this, the more I think we need, no matter what's happening, we need to continue this. I do forums at the colleges, but it's a lot easier with this message like this, to do them like this, give an update. Anybody and everybody can join and anybody and everybody can ask a question that we'll answer. So it is a lot like convocation.
Good. Thank you, Chancellor. Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks. Okay, good. Um, I know most of you say, well, Ernie hasn't said anything at this point, but she has a laryngitis problem, so and if she does speak, we may have a difficult time understanding. So she, we pass it along to the group.
I, I think, but, Dr., Dr., uh, Smith, well, I think the question that she's probably still wondering about is that RIF program. When you have this forum, do you get a lot of questions from people concerned about whether they don't like it or not?
No, no, because we've been telling them that if, what, what we've been telling them, and what I told them the last time was, we'll know in October, after the fall enrollment period, around October one, we'll know where we stand. But I, I, not everybody's probably had a chance to look at it, but I kind of laid it out in a note that I sent to the board. Jennifer's going to talk, talk in a little more detail, but right now between the, we are making reductions in the budget right now. So we've got a number of vacant positions that we're not filling. We have reduced the part-timers because we're just not there on campus. So we are taking steps to get our budget in alignment with, you know, the, the revenues that we have coming in. I, I'm going to follow up with her. I mean, we know that that's a possibility if the enrollments, uh, if you have catastrophic drops, and I've told everybody that, or enrollment drops, but right now we just do not see that. As a matter of fact, we're trending in the other direction. But I sent a note out earlier tonight, today, I'm not, it, it went out late, so I'm not sure which time to look at it. It kind of lays out. But right now, right now, based on what we're seeing, because the summer went up and the fact that we're uh, making daily progress, we're in, we're in really good shape right now.
Okay, thanks, Dr. Head. At this point, our board members, you have an opportunity to talk about things that you participated in that may be related to the work that we do. So if you do have something you would like for the group to hear, feel free to speak, feel free to speak up at this time.
Uh, you're Dr. Smith. I, I
Yes, sir.
It's Ken Lloyd. I was by an organization called Crosswalk and then I think they have one in Dallas called Exodus Ministries. And the question was asked, it was, one of the major issues they have with the, uh, relea- releasing of females out of the prison system is that they don't have the same programs as the males as far as getting them jobs and taking care of them. So the question was asked is, are we willing to have a discussion with the chaplain and some people about educating some of these women that are coming out and in incarceration to get them back into the system?
Dr. Smith, yes.
Yeah, go, go ahead, Dr. Head.
I'd be glad to talk to anybody. And we've talked to a number of other groups. So yes, if you can send Helen or me the information, Trustee Lloyd, we'd be glad to follow up with them.
Yeah, they, they, they're, they're saying that the money and stuff is available for these, uh, ladies that are being released and they want to be educated. And they're saying, hey, you know, what would it take to make this happen? So.
Okay.
The, the role that Lone Star would like to play and possibly help.
So you're going to send us
Yeah, go ahead, Dr. Head.
So, Trustee Lloyd, you're going to send us the information, then we'll get right on that.
Thank you.
Your work.
Okay, any other comments?
Yes, Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Linda.
Yeah, this is, um, Linda Good. And I just want to make sure that everyone is aware that this morning, the United States Supreme Court issued a decision that will have impacts on us. And that is its decision on the DACA program, which is the deferred removal for, um, childhood entrance to the United States. And the court struck down the administration's attempt to end that program. And I haven't finished reading the entire opinion, but it's my understanding they're sending it back for Department of Homeland Security to try again. So for right now, it's a win and our DACA students are safe.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad you brought that up. I had, I had not heard that.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's Came out this morning.
Okay, good. I'll find a copy of it. Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I actually, uh, I was going to mention that as well. Um, my wife just happened to mention, I didn't know about it, to be honest with you, she just mentioned it a few seconds ago. Because my concern was how it was going to have an impact on, you know, on, on, on the mission, you know, on enrollment if, if it went the wrong way. So fortunately, fortunately, that's the new point now. And I'm reading, um, I'm just reading something real quickly and it does say, it'll, anything that was brought back, any new, uh, policy or any new executive, uh, any new, uh, action taken by the, by the president will probably take months or perhaps years to implement. So, so I think we're okay for the fall.
Okay. Thank you. Any other trustees have anything they would like to mention in terms of, uh, activities that they've been involved with that's of interest to the board? Okay, if not, the only thing that I've, I've been real quiet, staying inside, uh, I was requested by one of the colleges to record a, a little speech dealing with June tenth. You know, that's going to be, uh, used in some form or fashion at the college. And I've done that and looking forward to hearing the, the outcome of that. But otherwise, that's been it. Okay. We have no board committee reports. So at this point, I will move to the consent agenda. We have twenty-two items on the consent agenda. Uh, one item is, item nine has been pulled. Are there any other items that you would like to have considered separately? I'm hearing none.
I'm, I have a question. I'm sorry. When you say that number nine has been pulled, you mean it was taken off the agenda or it's been pulled?
Taken off the agenda. Taken off the agenda. Thank you.
Thanks.
Appreciate you. Okay, hearing none, I would like to have a motion. Okay, hearing none, I would like to have a motion. To. Approve items one through eight. Ten through twenty two.
So move.
Second.
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, that we adopt those items. All those in favor, vote by the usual sign of aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Good, that's moving on great. Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda is, oh, I thought it was going to be the policy report, but go ahead on that.
Steve. Please back that up, please, to.
It's supposed to be policy report and consideration.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. There is a policy for first reading.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, this Mike Sullivan may jump in. Um, did we pull number nine as in we're not going to discuss it or we pull number nine to consider it separately?
No, it's because it's been it's been removed from the agenda.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next item is our consideration and review of the recommended revisions to sections. One E point one oh three and one E point one oh four of the Lone Star College Policy Manual relating to. Board office elections and the appointment of our board committees. Are there any questions or comments anyone would like to make concerning the first reading of that particular policy revision?
That's Mike Sullivan. If I can get in line, please, sir.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Are you ready guys? Okay, thank you. I'd like to make a friendly motion and if Mario could tell me if I should do it after the reading or if I should do it now and then we take a vote on the amendment. And then a vote on the um. Mario, could you kind of walk me through how to make a motion on this real quick?
Yes, sir. You would make, yes, sir. You would make a motion seeking to amend it and in the words of. I move that the section and whatever section you want amended. Uh, so let's say. E dot one oh three, you would say the section number and then you would read what the amendment should be. And then preferably tell us where it should be placed at the end of the paragraph in between. The more direction you can give us about exactly what the change will be, I think the better to the discussion that follows will be and the more true to the amendment we can make that revision.
Okay, thank you, Mario. Mr. Chairman, that's way too technical for me. I don't know where to place it within. Recommended revision. So may I just read a short friendly amendment that I'd like to be considered?
Okay.
And then leave it a leave it to Mario or someone that understands that could put this in the best position possible. Within the the revision, I make a motion to amend this item by calling for a random drawing proceeding. Other than the chair and chancellor who shall keep their current seats and the board council who should sit at either end of the board table. Period. This random drawing can be decided upon by the administration or the chair, period. And that's my motion.
Can you repeat it one more time?
You bet. I make a motion to amend this item by calling for random drawing proceeding other than the chair and the chancellor who shall keep their current seats. And the board council who shall sit at either end of the board table, period.
Okay, you've heard this motion. Do you have a second?
Let's I'll go ahead and give it a second so we can discuss. Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, are there are there any questions?
Yeah, justification. I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Yeah, go ahead, Art.
My my question, I guess I just want to see, I think I kind of understand makes somehow makes sense, but is there a particular reason or is there? You know, anything in particular you'd like to emphasize or something?
Uh, sure. Let me give you the background on it, Art. Thank you for asking. Um. Mike, remember for the public and employees that are listening to this, this was the subject of. A work public workshop that we had out at the Woodlands Conference Center. I made my concerns known then publicly and also said that I reserve the right to amend it. Amend this item when it was read on the agenda so that we could also have random seating selections. I don't know how, you know, I don't know that it's any more or less fair to walk into the board room on your first day. And to be told where to sit anymore than it is anything else. I think a random. Dropping pong ball to number, this is where you're going to sit for two years. Other than that, what's the objection? Uh, I think it's fair. I think it's random and to to not allow it when. When the discussion about changing board officers and committees, I just think it's a nice time to. To do it. That's the rationale.
Would you consider also adding the co- what is it? The the Vice Chair as also up there? I mean, I'm just.
Well, sure, I've been there over a year and I've not seen the Vice Chair have to get up and go sit in the chair for the chair. And generally, that's what happens. Look, I've looked at other, I've looked at other colleges around the state. I've looked at municipalities. I've looked at commissioners' courts. And. You know, the mayor of Houston, the mayor of Pro Tem sits on one side and the agenda director sits on the other. That's Martin, Dave Martin. Uh, you go to Cedar Park and the mayor sits in the middle and the city, excuse me, the uh. The city attorney sits on the end. So it's kind of all over the place. And certainly amenable to have an amended, it just reduces the pool. Pool, P O O L, that is available.
Okay. All right.
They certainly don't have any objection to that if that's what it would take to get this passed and added.
Mike, I have one question. You mentioned that the board attorney would sit on, you know, one end versus the other end.
Yes, sir.
My personal preference is and it's for maybe it's personal reasons and it may only apply to me. But I would love to see the board legal counsel sit. Next to the chairman.
Absolutely.
Because they are to me. Before. We I hate to use the word error, but I can't think of a better word. Before the chair makes a. And a serious error that might impact the board one way or the other. I would love for that, you know, for that person to sit right next to me and say, hey, hold up, do so and so and so and so. Because I think it cuts down on a lot of inefficiencies and issues. So that would be my only. Uh, recommendation to your motion. Have the legal counsel sit right next to whoever the board chair is. Before I came before I came on the board, the legal counsel. Uh, well, we didn't, we didn't, well, we're sitting out, you know, with the regular vice chancellors and 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 Chair Good. Uh, I'm gonna say Chair Good, but because I don't know if I should have it arranged, you know, for that to change and I view that as being very, 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 very helpful.
Okay, I no objection. Uh, the counter to that would be that. No other board member knows what the discussion going on between the council and the chair is. I guess a little more transparent if when we call on Mario, Mario doesn't walk up and whisper in Steve's ear. Mario talks in public, it's recorded and everybody can hear it. Kind of think the board council will do the same thing, but that's just personal opinion and and an aside. I don't object. Okay, I think it's.
Speaking as a lawyer, I'm going to disagree with you. Because board counsel is our attorney. And we enjoy attorney client privilege in our conversations with her. So, no, I'm not going to ask her to go to the podium, uh, but I do agree with Alton. That board chair needs to sometimes have on the fly quick consultations and it's usually only about a matter of procedure. Is it okay to do a motion here? Is it okay to answer that question? That's usually the kinds of conversations that's taking place. But if they don't happen, then we're going back and we're ending things later. So I I agree with Alton that. Board counsel, uh, the chair needs to have ready and easy access to board counsel during.
I agree.
Um, I. I don't see the value in random seating. I think traditionally seating has been. Um, chair next to the chancellor. Flanked by the other officers and then going out in either direction by seniority. And I think that is. An equally common arrangement.
Okay, thank you. Linda, good input and I appreciate that. I I would like, I would also say that. I didn't see the need to change the board makeup with respect to nominating officers and appointing committees, but I've been very reasonable in. The discussions that have led up to where we are today.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's why we're going through this process. Uh, you know, Mike, everyone has an opportunity to share their ideas and et cetera.
Yes, sir.
So let's our let's continue to do that because, you know, to be being open and transparent. You know, about issues to me, that's the best way to solve problems in the future. And we all understand that sometimes our our dialogue, you know, may be accepted and sometimes it may not be, you know, accepted.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Would it be better to do two uh, two amendments to the motion? I don't know, so that we can separate those two issues that that were brought up? Or should we do it together?
No, we have a motion and a second. What's the second amendment?
Oh, yeah, that's why we already have them. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we already have motion. So I'm going to call for a vote.
Okay, okay.
You know, for lack of another tactic, unless there's something different.
Okay.
And I'm going to do it. Make if you all don't mind to make sure that I have an accurate count, I am going to do a roll call vote.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, the the vote here is on the amendment or the proposed amendment. Is that correct?
That's correct. You know, that that the uh, that the way I understood and then Mike can repeat it is that the board council will sit on. Either end of the podium. And the chair would sit, you know, next to the chancellor.
I understood the motion. Yes, sir.
Okay, got you. Make sure you.
Mr. Mr. Chair, based on the discussion of the fellow trustees. I'm more than happy to pull out the language regarding the board council if it makes it. Uh, higher probability and chance of my amendment passing without it.
I think it'll help.
Okay, all right. Look, it's all about, like you said, it's it's discussion and and I'm not here to break anybody over. Barrel, it's it's just those I had an amendment, I heard the discussion, I'm amending my amendment with the permission of the board. May I do that?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, may may I make a request, point of clarification for. Trustee Sullivan to read his amendment again like he would like.
Getting ready to do before I was interrupted. So my motion as as amended will be I make a motion to amend this item by calling for a random drawing proceeding.
Okay.
How's that?
Yeah, the second.
Second.
Okay, it's been moving properly. Second, that we amend the original motion to uh. To your random seating arrangement on board members with the exception of the chair.
Uh, the chair of the chancellor and the board counsel.
Well, yeah, the chair of chancellor and the board counsel.
Yes, sir.
So any any discussion? If not, I'm I'm going to do a roll call vote on the amended motion.
Okay.
Trustee Thoma.
No.
Okay. Sullivan?
Yes.
Good?
No.
Okay, foul of bars absent. Smith, yea. Trustee Pierce?
No, she said no.
They they vote? He's absent. Okay, he's absent. Okay. Ken Lloyd?
No.
Art Murillo?
Aye.
Okay. The yeses are one. Two, three, three yeses. Yes, I mean, one, one, two, three, four, four no. Motion fails. Okay. Moving right along. We financial report. Dr. Head, Art, are you doing it, Art?
Jennifer, Jennifer's going to give the.
Okay, okay.
You got it, Jennifer? We can't. We're not hearing your voice. We're having technical problems. Um. Do you want to come over and talk on? We're we're at the system office, but we're in two different offices. Do you want to come over and give the presentation on my computer? We can't hear you. Okay, if you want to come over now, she's only like thirty seconds away. So if you'll give us just a minute, well.
Okay.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this has definitely been a technology kind of day.
Yes.
Um, yeah, okay. So my apologies. Here we go. Um, so. I know the last few times that we've met, I've kind of used the same format each time to. Update everyone on the numbers where we're at. Uh, for today, I wanted to actually take a step back and maybe not. Spend so much time in the weeds of the numbers and make sure that. Um. I share with everyone sort of the big picture of where our finances stand. Um, with the coronavirus impact on us. Um, so just have two slides. Um, here first, starting with the. An estimated expenditures resulting from COVID, we're at about fifteen million. Now, I know. In prior presentations, it's been a much larger number, but that's because it's also included. The potential impacts on enrollment. If we take that piece out for a moment, just the expenditures themselves, ordering PPE. And purchasing computers for students, sanitizing our buildings, those types of items, the actual expenditures. For coronavirus right now is at about fifteen million. Um, and you can see we have also received fifteen point three million in CARES Act institutional funds. Um, this is not including the CARES Act funds that are going directly to students. This is just the institutional funds. Um, so in this regard, our our more direct expenses of coronavirus have have truly been covered by. CARES Act institutional funds. Um, and the other positive news is Dr. Head already mentioned is our yesterday, we were at seven point three percent positive summer enrollment. So. That's why I say for this current fiscal year, we have two, two and a half months left of the current fiscal year. Financially, we are good and we are strong. Um, the wild card that we are working towards managing is fall enrollment. Um, Dr. Head mentioned that too, where that stands, uh, yesterday, it was at about a thirty percent decline. This morning, it had improved to twenty seven percent decline and it's. Um, we do still have a long ways to go and it's moving in the right direction. But we still don't know at the end of the day where that enrollment is going to stand. Um, so that's where our wild card is and I wanted to share with everyone here sort of alternate scenarios, right? If it were. right, if it were uh, what I think is the worst case scenario with a thirty percent decline, that's a reduction in annual revenue of thirty eight million. Um, on the flip side, if we get it down to a ten percent decline, it's a reduction in annual revenue of thirteen million. Um, so these are large swings for us. Um, to work towards managing this, we are already doing five percent budget reductions in next year's budget, which would save us fourteen million. Um, so what we need to look towards though is if enrollment declines by more than ten percent, then our recurring expenditures will exceed recurring revenues. We can balance the budget, we will be able to balance the budget. Um, we, we're gonna, regardless even at a ten percent decline, we are still gonna continue the hiring freeze, which saves us about four and a half million, and we are estimating our cash reserves uh, to be about seventeen million in excess of the minimum goal. So, we can use those resources to balance the budget, so we will be able to balance the budget. But those are one-time sources, so this is sort of like paying our monthly bills out of our savings accounts. Um, so, I, I do see us still being able to remain healthy uh, in next year's budget, which is September first, twenty twenty through August thirty first, twenty twenty one. Um, what we just need to be watchful of is, if it is the case that enrollment declines, exceed ten percent, then balancing the budget with these one-time sources means that deficit remains for the FY twenty two budget, which is only a little over a year away, September, it starts September first, twenty twenty one. Um, so if we could go to the next slide, um, just so I could kind of summarize, like I said, I just wanted to get to this bigger picture of where our finances stand. Uh, just giving sort of a household example, if you have, you know, um, two working adults and one of them is laid off, significantly reducing their monthly income, right, that family can make no changes to their lifestyle and cover monthly bills using their savings for some period of time, but eventually uh, they do need to reduce, to actually reduce their monthly bills to equal what the new income is, they can't continue to use that savings indefinitely. Um, so I would say really depending on what happens with fall enrollment, that's where Lone Star College is. Um, we are already making sort of, to my example, lifestyle changes with the five percent budget reductions. Um, so with that, but then also with our savings, with those cash reserves, um, we, uh, I'm very confident we will remain healthy this current year FY twenty, which like I said, has two and a half months left. And then in next year's budget FY twenty one, which is September first, twenty twenty through August thirty first, twenty twenty one. Um, it's, if our enrollment declines, again, if they exceed that ten percent um, sort of threshold for us, um, then our budget beginning September first, twenty twenty one is where I would see our cash reserves being significantly impacted. Um, so, um, so I mean, that concludes my presentation, like I said, I just kind of wanted to take a step back from just these tables of numbers, uh, which i- if you have any questions on those, I certainly can still provide those. Um, but I was hoping to um, give this big, bigger picture of the path that we're on. And um, like I said, with this household example, right, we, we do easily have about a year, a little over a year, um, where we're healthy. But it's making sure we are planning for uh, the continued path.
Jennifer, it's Mike Stoma, uh, what is the, I think I know the answer, but I want a clarification from you. Given the contingencies here, what the enrollment may be, what's the trigger point, the trigger time? And you, you know, you're gonna have to implement uh, some contingencies other than what's been planned. I mean, do you have, it's gonna be September when the enrollment is done? Uh, I assume that's the date it would be, I mean, how, how, what's your anticipation of that?
Yeah, um, early September, I think it should be around September tenth or so would be our official day for the fall term. That's when we will know for sure. I mean, certainly leading up to that, we will progressively be getting a better, better idea. Um, but that will be the official day of record where we will know definitively what that fall enrollment is and, and that's when I think so come September and so perhaps at the October board meeting is when we can talk through what that actual outcome is and say, okay, this is where we need to go from here.
So you may have to, as a system, uh, uh, Mr. Chancellor, you may have to, again, uh, react quickly, you know, given the enrollment, based on what the enrollment tells you.
Yeah, so, we know we're okay even with major losses for this coming year. For this twenty twenty one, this fiscal year, we know we're gonna be okay, even today, we know we're gonna be okay. It's the following year is where we see the, I mean, these are, we're looking at this in a two-year block and it actually, we're looking at it beyond that, we were talking about if enrollment does this, what does it look like and we don't want to be kicking the can down the road, we'll have to make some decisions in, in October, big decisions. To go back to uh, trustee Lloyd's question and so, we think we're taking the steps to get us in good shape, I, I, I think that we, we have, we're anticipating the worst, as we've been talking about and hoping for the best, but it'll be October and then we'll be able to, like, a couple of years.
I agree, I, I commend again you and your team uh, for the job you guys have done in, in planning and, and trying to anticipate what can't be anticipated, so I think you've done probably the best you can do and I, I appreciate your work, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Head, my question, you know, she said the wild card is fall enrollment.
Uh huh.
So, so what that gets back to, the enrollment is directly required, connected to recruiting.
Right.
So my question is, what, what is it that we're doing different from a recruitment standpoint, based on the situation that we're in?
This is kind of an odd time, you know, I checked today, for, for example, I mean, we have ads all over, I mean, in every media source, in every newspaper, we're on the radio, we're on TV, we've sent out, um, in early July, we have sent out four hundred thousand postcards, four hundred thousand. So, um, what I think is, we're gonna be seeing a surge sometime in the next couple of weeks, because we haven't enrolled dual credit students yet either, by the way, not very many of them. And we, actually, for all the dual credit students enrolled, we'd be pretty close to, would be approaching even or so right now. So, I, in my, right now, we're doing everything I think we should be doing. We're reaching out on financial aid, I mean, that, where I, my, my big concern right now is reaching out to students who should be applying for financial aid. We're about four thousand behind where we should be. And um, that's a, that's about a four percent number for us. I don't, you know, we talk about this a lot. I mean, between budgets and marketing, you can talk to the marketing people, we're, it, it's happening at the colleges and happening everywhere I look every day to make sure that that's what we're doing. So trustee Lloyd, I think right now, we're, we're probably doing more than we ever have for recruiting. The problem that we're having is we couldn't get into the high schools at the end, that's the issue. We're trying to get the students in and then we're reaching out to our own current faculty, that's what we were doing in the spring, encouraging the faculty to talk to the students and just encourage them to stay there, so.
Is it safe to say, do we have like, a, I know we've got all these high schools in our jurisdiction. How many of those high school, how many twenty twenty high school grad, what's the head count? Do we have an actual head count of those students?
We do, um.
Then how do we break it down, which campus is responsible for what ISD?
Yeah, we have it, we have a, a internal division over that, so that, that's been discussions through student services and the college president, so every college has certain high schools, and we have a couple of them that are split. Uh, for example, Klein is split, but UP is the main, they're the main college, but you, uh, Tom Ball also has part of Klein and Montgomery has part of Klein, but UP is the one that's responsible for it.
Okay.
We, we have, um, I'll have to send you the report because Link sent it to me this week. We know exactly how many high school students, how many seniors graduated, we also know, you know, I almost sent it to you, we had so many things going on this week, um, we know what the percentage is of those students that historically have been coming to us, and we know what, what it looks like right now. So I will send all that to you, so you can see what we're doing. It's, we're really boring down into the details of this and making a real effort to um,
So.
dig these students out of there, so.
So we actually have the contact information for each one of those students as well, that, that's great.
I don't know about the contact for each individual student, not in the way that you might be uh, you might be thinking about.
I know, I, I, yeah, uh, as a, being in sales and coming out of a pro, we always looked at a, each person was a prospect as far as getting business. And so you had to really get in detail about that prospect.
Right. Um, we don't have it in the way that you, we, we're sending to households, not necessarily to students. And there's some, there's some reason for that, we do, we do recruit the students, but we, we go into, especially now, I mean, I've specifically told them to go to the households and deal with the parents over this, because I think right now they're the ones making the primary decisions. I mean, I don't, I don't know too many students who are not engaged with the parents about going off right now with the virus. I mean, I, to me, that's going to be a parent decision, so that's what we're trying to do. I mean, I, I know from my own experiences, um, when you send information to students, and I'm not insulting the students at all, but we want to make sure that the parents know what the options are here and that we're available and we have online, that, that's been our approach to this.
Okay, that is, thank you.
You know, and, and today's, in today's environment, in today's situation, even the best of marketing programs, you, you, it's gonna be tough to predict, I don't, I don't care what business you're in. Because there's so many other unpredictable and un, undetermined factors uh, that's gonna force people's decisions, whether to go to school, I mean, employment's, unemployment's still dropping, you've got uh, uh, you know, so much uncertainty right now, uh, you, we don't know how this coronavirus is gonna really pan out. There's so much uncertainty now, I, I think even the most effective marketing program, what you still have to do, it's gonna be undetermined as to how, what your, what your return on investment's gonna be in terms of getting enrollment. I think, I just think there's just too much variable.
Yeah, but I, I, what I'm thinking in terms of, there should be a target set and then try to achieve that target, even, you know, just for the sake of, of that's.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, I agree, we're in agreement there, absolutely.
But let's also keep in mind that our employees are all working remotely as well. So, we have to do things completely different than what we did before. Ken, is there something that we're not doing? That you think we ought to try?
Well, the question I'm asking is that, I'm just curious as to how many prospects are out there and when, and then what percentage of those prospects are we picking up?
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and um, maybe, you know, I'm, I'm always trying to uh, try and uh, describe some of what I hear on the ground, seeing, being that I have a son and, uh, uh, graduated this year. I had about five of them here, um, five of his friends graduated this last year. And I met a new one, um, uh, one of his friends uh, who was admitted in uh, the University of Texas in Austin. And uh, and, you know, of course I congratulated him in school and up, you know, it's excited. But as soon as we started talking about what's gonna happen next, he immediately started saying, uh, talked about how uh, the residence hall living arrangements aren't, aren't clear, not clear yet. And a lot of the details about course syllabi and campus functions, you know, things that are kinda, a lot more questions than answers, right? And um, you know, I didn't sway him away from, you know, there even though I wanted to. But the uh, the, the truth is, I think, I have a feeling that uh, and, and I know I've been, we've mentioned this before, that a lot of families would rather keep them here for at least a semester. So I mean, I'm, I guess I'm just trying to, uh, my, at my two cents as far as what, what uh, Ken Lloyd um, is, is talking about that, you know, is there any, any new areas that we need to target or anything new, anything we need to consider? Uh, are there students that were not gonna come, but now might, I mean, I don't know, I'm sure, I know our staff.
I'm impressed, you know, you said you sent out four hundred thousand postcards.
Right.
And, and I'm, I'm, you know, just being in,
Yeah.
Coming from the private industry, when we were given the territory, they said that uh, if, if you're mediocre, you got a million dollar territory and you're just a mediocre person, you can pick up twenty percent of that territory.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you're exceptional, you can. Speaking personally from my career, that, that, that was the situation.
Yeah, I have the.
One, one of the things, Dr. Head, I would say, I think the message is, uh, at least for several individuals, is pretty clear that we ought to make sure they were exploring all recruiting opportunities. And, you know, and based on the style that I've seen you exhibit over the years, that you, when you get data, you make sure no stone is left unturned. You know, as you're, you know, looking into stuff, so encourage you to continue to do that.
Sure. I have, uh, just so happened, yeah, sent the report out. We have a, we have thirty thousand, almost thirty one thousand high school seniors in our service area, thirty one thousand. Of that, we get about twenty five percent, and, and so we're trying to increase that number, I'm gonna send this report to you, John Link sent it earlier this week. And you'll see how we're breaking this down and what our, what our approach is, but um, as, as trustee Good and uh, Stoma both indicated, this is an unusual period for us because we don't have people at the colleges and people going out recruiting, and we haven't had since March, that's the problem. So, um, we'll see, I, the reason I was happy with the summer enrollments, at least word is getting out, but I mean, I always think we can do more, but I'm, I'm gonna send this report to you just as soon as the board meeting's over. Yeah, I think it'll, it really, uh, really, I, it, it's just, it's interesting how we're, how many we have, and we know what the numbers look like for the next couple of years, that's the kind of reports we're doing, so.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Have we, have we finished the financial report?
Yes.
Okay. Um, a couple of things, I forget, one thing I forgot to mention, and Art probably is gonna shoot me on this. And I love Lone Star's honors program, and I just found out that Art's son has been accepted to the Lone Star honors program, and I want to congratulate both he, his wife, and his son.
Thank you.
On this, on this significant accomplishment.
Excited, we're excited, thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and I also uh, agree with what Stoma said earlier, you know, about the fine job that uh, everyone's been doing, keeping up with the finances and et cetera in this turbulent period of time. And so I agree with him, but I'm very pleased at the kind of data they're gathering and the thoroughness of it, and how they're staying on top of stuff. Okay. I guess we're getting close to the end, so I'm gonna ask, I'm close to the end, do we have any future agenda items that we would like to have considered our next meeting on, I think it's July the twenty eighth? Any future agenda items? If not, if I have the authority, I will declare the meeting as being terminated at this point in time, and you all stay safe, keep the enthusiasm going, and I can't wait to see you all in person again. Oh, yeah, by the way, too, oh, be- before I close the meeting, Dr. Head, I forgot to mention that you had, you've been ex, Dr. Head is always getting all kinds of honors, and he is now officially a board member of the AACCC. And I can't even remember exactly what that, what does that stand for, Dr. Head, AACCC?
American Association, American Association of Community Colleges.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Yeah, and that's the one that Bumpus is chairman of, isn't it?
That's correct, right.
Yeah. Great, well, great job, keep up the good work and, and we will talk later.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, good meeting.
Thanks, everyone, thank you.
Meeting adjourned, thank you. Have a good week, bye-bye.